Good evening. The January 4th, 2024 organizational meeting of the Mentor Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313, Point 14 of the Ohio Revised Code. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Wade to the podium to complete the oath of office.
If you'd raise your right hand. I, Lauren Marchaza.
I, Lauren Marchaza.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
And discharge.
And discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Mentor Exempted Village.
Of the Mentor Exempted Village.
School District Board of Education.
School District Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Repeat after me. I, Rose M. Iapolo.
I, Rose M. Iapolo.
Do hereby swear.
Do hereby swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And that I will, I will to the best of my ability.
And I will to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
And discharge.
And discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a member.
As a member.
Of the Mentor Exempted Village School District.
Mentor Exempted Village School District.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Iapolo.
Here.
Ms. Jessling.
Present.
Ms. Marchaza.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence for Perry Schools in Iowa where a school shooting Thank you. We will now have comments from our superintendent.
Good evening. Before begins tonight's meeting, I need to amend the agenda to reflect a couple of changes regarding the types of committees we will be appointing members to this evening. Under number eight, Board Representative Appointments, we need to add an alternate for the Legislative Liaison, and then we need to add the Board Policy Liaisons, which is going to be considered a Board Committee moving forward. So the agenda should now read, number eight, Board Representative Appointments, number one, OSBA Legislative Liaison, number two, which is the addition, will be OSBA Legislative Alternate, number three, OSBA Student Achievement Liaison, number four, Mentor Schools Foundation, and then number five, Board Policy Liaisons, in which there will be two members that we will select there. The second change to the agenda will be to eliminate number fourteen, Appointment of Hearing Officer, and number fifteen, Appointment of Compliance Officers. We actually have administrators assigned as hearing and compliance officers that deal with discipline hearings and harassment and discrimination cases in our district. Should an appeal to those decisions be necessary, the entire board would hear the case, not just one or two members, so we do not need to appoint these positions. The third change to the agenda will be after number twenty-eight, Authorizing Public Records Training Designee. We need to add a, excuse me, we need to add a section for Superintendent Report and Recommendations. Under this section, we will then add the Curriculum Liaisons and the School Safety Liaisons, which are considered administrative committees and are appointed by the superintendent. So the agenda in that section will now read, number twenty-nine, Superintendent Report and Recommendations, one, Curriculum Liaisons, of which there will be two, and number two, School Safety Liaisons, of which there will be two, and then number thirty will now be adjournment, so we will adjourn after that. In order to make sure that our practice is in alignment with Board Policy, we are going to need to make some adjustments to what our current policy reads regarding the organizational meeting moving forward. When we combined the Neola policy template with what we were using previously with Pebble and Wagner, we did not have clear delineations between what is considered a Board Committee and what is considered an administrative committee. The following changes will be made to make sure this is clarified for our new liaison positions we want to add to create greater board member involvement in some of the key work we are doing in the district. It actually involves four different policies. So under Policy 0153, Appointees, we are actually going to eliminate letters E through K in our current policy. This will leave the five items that are considered Board Committees that require Board Appointments at the organizational meeting each year. This includes our new Board Policy Liaisons, which we just mentioned, which will be a Board Committee and will be required to have a Sunshine Law notification. Those meetings will take place twice per year, once in late January or early February, and then once again in late August or early September when we get those updates from Neola. Under Policy 0151, which is the Organizational Meeting Policy, we will add the sentence, "At the organizational meeting, Board Liaisons to administrative committees may be appointed by the superintendent." This will allow the superintendent to appoint board members to the administrative committees, which we currently have established, which are curriculum and now the new one with school safety, that we have added over the last eighteen months. The superintendent can add or disband administrative committees at any time, depending on the work we have in the district, but we will review the appointments to these committees at least once a year then, based on that policy change. Under Policy 0154, which is about motions, we will add General Legal Advisor and a Designee to attend public record access training required for board members for each term of office to the list of the motions. This will align with the consent agenda part of our organizational meeting that we now have amended for this evening. And then finally, under Policy 6836, Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, we will add the sentence, "The committee will consist of the Board President and Vice President and six members of the community." This will align with our past policy and will continue to be considered a Board Committee that will also require Sunshine Law notification. I hope I said all that correctly, Mr. Wade. We will have these policy updates ready for the first reading at our regular meeting on Tuesday, with a second reading potentially at a work session of the Board later in January. I do want to thank all of our board members for the individual conversations today as we work through the process, so we can make sure that our policies and our practices are aligned correctly moving forward.
Any discussion or questions with that? Okay. At this time, we have the nomination and election of the president. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Maggie Cook to be our president for the coming year.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. I think that, you know, when we're picking president and vice president, I think those kind of go hand in hand. This is our first opportunity to show the community that we heard their voices, and I think having a balanced president and vice president, I don't know if you all agree, would be beneficial. So I feel that, you know, knowing how you guys feel about that definitely affects my nominations and my vote, so I was interested in how you guys felt.
If, if your question was whether you wanted two people from sort of different viewpoints, because the president is the presiding officer, the vice president really just has a supportive function. The only role that the vice president plays is if the, the presiding officer is unable to be at a meeting. And then the Citizens Financial Advisory, that really is a reflection of the guidance that's coming from our treasurer and our six citizens, so we're, whoever is the president and vice president is there as an observer and an informational gathering role, maybe ask them questions. So I would say that would necessarily be a needed consideration for this part of it. The other pieces make sense to have multiple viewpoints in, in our board committees, but as far as president and vice president, I don't know that that is pertinent.
I, I agree with Ms. Iapolo, because I do think that without the financial committee, I would say, yeah, exactly what you said, they're really kind of just titles, and there's nothing more that a vice president can do that a different, you know, any board member can't do. However, having said that, the financial, Citizens Financial Committee, I think, is going to be really important, especially because we just had a failed levy. So I do think having different perspectives, different viewpoints on, on that committee is imperative, and I think it does send a message to the community that we are trying to work together, and we do want all perspectives to be heard and voiced in every committee and every role or position that we may share.
Right. And, you know, last, last year, we had Mr. Tuttle, a member on the board who was a minority, and he was, he was elected president. I think, I speak for many, that that made me feel a little bit more relieved, some hope that there was balance on the board, especially when you have a majority and a minority. So, you know, I know the, the position of president and vice are sometimes looked at as ceremonial, but I just think that who we elect today as president and vice president kind of is, will be the barometer for how the new board will function. So I certainly can support Ms. Cook as president, if I can see balance in our vice president. So that's just, that's just how I feel on the subject.
Do we have any other nominations for president at this time?
I would nominate Annie Payne.
Well, I guess my comment about the nomination, I appreciate that. I would have no problem with Mrs. Cook being the president, but I would certainly like to be vice president, only for the fact of the financial committee, and, and I do think it does send a, a message to the community. So I'd like to, I guess, here, before we vote on president, I would be glad to not, you know, have a dissenting vote on any of that, but obviously if they go hand in hand, I believe with Mrs. Iapolo, so I'd like to hear from other people, I guess, what are your opinions on that?
As I said, I don't think the role in terms of the Citizens Financial is interactive as much as it is observational. Sometimes only one member can attend, it just kind of depends, but the feedback that the treasurer and superintendent are getting from those six citizens who have financial expertise in their professional roles is very valuable. So it's, as I said, more of a listening rather than an interactive.
I'd like to ask Ms. Cook and Ms. Jessling, since you were sitting on the board last year, how, how do you think that having Mr. Tuttle as president, what was your opinion on that? Because you guys made a choice to vote him in, and he was in the minority.
We've, generally, I could speak to this, since I'm the, the longest-serving board member present, is that for the most part, we've had a president and vice president, and then the following year, usually the vice president has been elected as president, although that's not always been the case. So we've had some variations for a number of reasons, but other than leading the meeting, our votes are the same, you know, in terms of our power, influence, whatever you want to call it, that we each share one-fifth of the decision-making in our district. So you need somebody to act in that parliamentary role, but our voices, our voices are co-equal.
Do you see the balance, the benefit of having more of a balanced president and vice president, especially given the election we just had?
I can tell you, just based on the last ten years, it really was not a factor. You know, I'm, I am happy to serve with any of my colleagues, and I felt that way for the ten years that I've served. You know, there's been some different styles, maybe, a little bit in, in terms of an individual member, but everybody led with integrity and moved the, the agendas through the meetings very seamlessly, so I don't know that it makes that kind of a difference that you're referring to.
Well, I can speak as being, sitting on the other side last year, that it made a big difference having a balanced president and vice president, so, and I heard, I heard a lot of that. So if it doesn't seem to be that big of a deal, in terms of how we serve, and it is more ceremonial, I think it's a small gesture that we can make to show the community we heard them, and, and if we, if we really want to dissect this, this latest election, there was a majority of, of voters that spoke out feeling a certain way. So while Ms. Payne and I are the minority here, I think it would be a great gesture to have a balance, and like I said, I would fully support Ms. Cook as president, if we can agree to that.
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
So, just to clarify, you'll, we have two nominations. When I say your name, you'll just vote for who you...
Were we done with discussion, though? Or were we allowed to still have discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have no comments.
No comments.
No comments. Any more discussion? Okay. Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Can I, who, or what are we voting for?
You vote, you say the name of the person you're in support of.
Say the name of the person.
President. The two nominations were Ms. Cook and Ms. Payne.
I will vote for myself.
Ms. Iapolo.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. Jessling.
Mrs. Cook.
Ms. Marchaza.
Mrs. Cook.
Ms. Payne.
I'll vote for myself.
President is Mrs. Cook.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, do we have a nomination, and we'll have the nomination and election of the vice president. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Jessling.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Payne. I just want to go back really quick. Ms. Payne has more than proven herself as deserving of this position. In her two years as board member, she recommended the new curriculum notification process where the district informs parents whose children are affected by a curriculum change. This allows any member of the public, as well as parents, to view the new curriculum. It also allows the opportunity to provide feedback to the district. Ms. Payne recommended the retired student resource officer option that has become a reality in many districts in the area, and hopefully in ours. She created the sexual content policy. She recommended both the curriculum committee and the safety committee liaison positions. Ms. Payne is a lifelong, lifelong resident and graduate of Mentor. She has proven that she can compromise with board members, and she listens to all sides of every issue. I've watched her vote a way that I know that she didn't feel, just because for the betterment of the district. Again, like I said earlier, while some say this position is merely ceremonial, I believe who we elect here will be the barometer for how the new board will function. This is the first decision that we make, president and vice president, and I hope we can deliver a fair and balanced one. With all due respect, Ms. Jessling, you do a fabulous job. You've, you've been here fourteen years, and you've had many opportunities, and I just think it would be wonderful to have Ms. Payne have that opportunity this time.
Thank you. I'd like to also note that whoever is vice president, it doesn't mean that they have to be president. I'm here to serve. I don't care necessarily about a title at all. However, like I said about the financial committee, I do think it's really imperative that we have different perspectives, and I think I do offer a different perspective. You both are teachers, and so you guys share certain perspectives that I don't have, and I think I would have a different perspective in the financial committee that would, would be appreciated. I do agree that I do think that this is a, a small gesture that would show the community that we are working together, and we are trying to hear all, all voices and all perspectives. So I do think that Mrs. Jessling would do a fine job with it as well. I think it would be valuable, and it would send a message to the community and the perception that they have of how our board's going to function going forward.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wade, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cook.
Mrs. Jessling.
Ms. Iapolo.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. Jessling.
I'll vote for myself.
Ms. Marchaza.
Ms. Jessling.
Ms. Payne.
Myself.
Vice President, three to two vote, Ms. Jessling.
Next, we have the Board Representative Appointments. Do I have a volunteer for the OSBA Legislative Liaison?
I'd like to volunteer.
I'd also like to volunteer.
Any more volunteers?
Can I, can I, before we vote, I'd like to do with this position what Ms. Cook has done with the student achievement position, rather than just read the list from OSBA on what's happening in Ohio in general, to really dive in and make it more district-specific. I see this position as an opportunity to educate the board and the community on legislation that specifically addresses voter concerns, and we've heard many coming off of such a heated election. I would want to give a comprehensive outline of each bill in a manner that is easy for everyone to understand. I think in the past, we've all, any of us who have sat here have heard that list read off, and it's rather cumbersome. I would lean to my fellow board members, to Mr. Heath and Mr. Wade, to highlight bills that are important to our district. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that my dad, our district state senator, currently serves as chairman of the Higher Education Committee. I don't believe that the district has ever had an opportunity like this, so...
Excuse me? Sorry, there's audience members that are speaking out. Can we just make sure that we keep that under control, please?
I don't think the district has ever had an opportunity like this, so I humbly ask that you allow me the privilege.
Thank you. Ms. Marchaza, did you have any comments?
Oh, sure. I mean, I, I think this is an incredibly important role during, especially these times that are very complex, as Rose, excuse me, Ms. Iapolo noted. It's incredibly important right now and going forward for us to be aware of pending legislation, things moving through the State House. These days, it seems that our State House is very focused on education, so it's important for us to be aware of what's going to come down the pike, what's going to impact our students, our staff, our teachers, and our curricula. It's something that I've already been very interested in, it's something that I, I read about every day, especially in running for this position. It's something I've just kept tabs on and, and had a personal interest in. With kids in the district, it's certainly of a concern. And so for me, this is something I wouldn't simply read from the report, as long as it comes in time, I will dissect it a little more deeply and really highlight those things that are going to be more impending, more immediately impacting us, and some, something that, you know, we, you know, I also plan to volunteer just for reference for the, the policy committee. So I think those two positions do go hand in hand. When you're talking about pending legislation and changing law, the policy role too is going to be very important for that, and I think that those two, again, go hand in hand, so just heads up, I'll be volunteering for that committee as well. So I, I would like to be considered, and thanks for the time to speak.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I think Ms. Iapolo has a, a unique position. I don't think we would, we've had this opportunity before, where we have a board member whose, you know, father is a state senator, and not just a state senator, he is our district state senator. And I know, Mr. Wade, you have written in previously to our state senator, so I just think that it would give us a different perspective and different access that we might not normally have to insider details about different bills and things like that. So I think Rose would be a fine option. I think Mrs. Marchaza would do a great job, too. I mean...
Forgive me, I, my father is a respiratory therapist, so I can't claim that, that he's a state senator, but I can guarantee that I will do just as thorough a job.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody is saying that somebody's father is better than the other father. That's certainly...
I didn't think that, but yes, I understand.
Well, I'm just, I'm just going to reiterate that it has a unique perspective, and I think it would be beneficial to our district, seeing that we have written into our state senator before and have met with him, so...
Okay. We have two volunteers. Mr. Wade, would you please call the roll?
So because we have two people, and there isn't consensus for just establishing one, just to, you know, this is not typical, so we would vote in the same way that we voted for president and vice president, just so we're all on the same page. So when I say your name, if you could just say who you would want to see as the OSBA liaison? Ms. Cook.
Mrs. Marchaza.
Ms. Iapolo.
Myself.
Ms. Jessling.
Mrs. Marchaza.
Ms. Marchaza.
Myself.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. Iapolo.
So Ms. Marchaza will be the OSBA Legislative Liaison.
I will now take volunteers for the OSBA Alternate Legislative Liaison.
I guess I'll volunteer myself for that.
Seeing none, I, I do not think you need to call the roll on this one. Mrs. Iapolo will be our OSBA Alternate Legislative Liaison. Thank you. Do I have a volunteer for the OSBA Student Achievement Liaison?
I'd be happy to volunteer to do that.
Thank you. Any other volunteers? Any discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Cook.
Mrs. Jessling.
Ms. Iapolo.
Myself.
Ms. Jessling.
Myself.
Ms. Marchaza.
Ms. Jessling.
Ms. Payne.
Ms. Iapolo.
Ms. Jessling will be the... Ms. Jessling will be the OSBA Student Achievement Liaison.
Okay, do I have a volunteer for the Mener Schools Foundation Representative?
I would be happy to be that representative.
Thank you. Any other volunteers? All right. Mrs. Payne will be our Mener Schools Foundation Representative. Thank you. I will now take volunteers for Board Policy Liaisons, and there will be two.
I'd like to volunteer.
I'll volunteer for that.
Any other volunteers? All right, seeing none, we have Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Marchaza as our Board Policy Liaisons. Thank you. Right, at this time, we have a recommendation to approve the place and time for the regular meetings of the Board of Education. We were going to have some discussion with a couple of times of those meetings for our summer months.
We should motion it second first, though.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So do I have a motion?
So moved that we have the second Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM is our regular meeting time.
Have a second?
Second.
And discussion?
I do want to bring up the point. Last year, we did change the summer months, the time for the meetings. And I know we had even discussed possibly moving them to a different day for the summer because it was really hard for people to come to both here and go to the Mener Rocks. Also, it was very loud in here once it hit about 7 o'clock. So I would like to ask if we could take a look at June, July, and August and come up with a plan for that.
I agree.
I know one of the problems that we had run into over the years where there might be a conflict for a board member, where Tuesday wasn't the preferred time. As soon as we looked at making a shift, we found conflicts that, for what time City Council might be meeting and so forth, that it didn't seem like there were good other options. So maybe leaving the day the same, but certainly moving it back two hours to the 5:00 PM, if that would-
I would, I would be remiss if I didn't at least voice the fact that I did hear from a pretty good portion of people last year saying they were not happy with the time because they didn't get out of work in time to come to the board meetings or, you know, they felt like they were rushed between here and going there. And I did look at the City Council meetings, and actually, they have a meeting, I think, in January. That's the same day as ours, next Tuesday. So, you know, can't do everything right there. But I do think that we should take a look at maybe just moving the day of, keeping it on the same week, but maybe for the summer, moving those three Tuesdays to Thursday or something. I'm open, I just wanted to, I don't know if, I know, Ms. Iapolo, you had mentioned that you've kind of heard the same thing when you were campaigning.
Yeah, that was the feedback that, that to either, to either, it was difficult to, people felt like they had to choose, and of course, they're always going to choose an outside outdoor concert in the summer, or 5:00 was just too early. So if even just for those three months, we move it that day, so we can keep it at 7:00, I think that would be appreciated by the public.
Is there potential for us to just move it one hour up as opposed to, because weren't we meeting at 5:00 over the summer? So perhaps we can meet at 6:00?
We would still have, with public commentary, it took us well over 7:00 even last summer. And it gets fairly loud in here.
One of the other things is the parking, because we really, Mener Schools supplies the parking for Mener Rocks. They really don't have parking outside of our facilities, so moving it to 6:00 would still create a parking issue.
Could we postpone making a decision on changing for those three summer months so we have a chance to maybe collaborate with the folks from the city and look at what other conflicts it might pose if we kept it on a different day for those three months?
What other conflicts?
I was going to say, are there other entities that we want to look at, too? I know, was it the Library Board was another one that I think was-
Wednesday, I think, aren't they Wednesday?
Is that on Wednesdays? We can gather maybe some of those dates and bring it to the meeting on Tuesday and make a decision then if we would want to do that. So we'll look at City Council. We'll look at Library. Are there others that any of our members can-
Does anybody know if City Council moves theirs in the summer? They do, right?
They do, they move it earlier.
Okay.
I think 5:00. I'm, I'm open to looking at different days, too. I think it's a good suggestion, but it would be nice to have a little information gathering time, so we could talk about it on the night, yes.
So if any board members come up with any other entities that we want to look at that you think might be conflicts, just let me know in the next couple of days, and we'll try and gather all that, and we'll present that on Tuesday. Mr. Wade, did you have another piece that you were looking at?
Yeah, just the policy. It says that the board shall, at the organizational meeting, vote on the following. Doesn't need a day, place, and time for regular meetings, which shall be held at least once every two months.
So if we vote to approve the second Tuesday right now with that one adjustment in November that we've already gotten mentioned-
We would be meeting the organizational meeting. I just wanted to make sure that-
Yeah, so we can meet that, and then we can make an adjustment to that schedule.
And I'll just remind you, you don't have to have a meeting every month.
That is true. Is there any more discussion on this? Okay, Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling.
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza.
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo.
Yes.
Ms. Payne.
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
And finally, we have approval of agenda items 10 through 28. Does anyone have a need for discussion before I call for a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend and to remove item 10 for a separate vote.
Okay.
That's what we've typically done in the past, yes.
Mr. Wade, could you help me here? Should we take out number 10 first and go to, stay in order, or do we go 11 through?
Yeah, I would vote, let's vote on 10 first.
Okay.
And then we can vote on 11 through, what I believe now is 20, yeah, it's still 28, right?
It is. Yes. Okay, so motion to approve, do I have a motion to approve the approval of membership to the Ohio School Board Association for 2024?
So moved?
Second?
And discussion?
I've appreciated the role that the OSBA has played in our district over a number of years. They were instrumental in our most recent superintendent and treasurer searches. They've been a wonderful resource for us on an array of matters. We appreciate having the Capitol Conference offered each year, and we've actively participated in that over all the years that I'm aware of. And Capitol Conference is an opportunity for our students to be showcased, which we've done also for the last 10 years that I'm aware of. And also that there are learning sessions on a wide variety of topics from experts within the state and even some folks from outside the state that can inform our board governance training. And I've always found those sessions to be of great value. So by participating in that, we have the strength in numbers that public school districts, the vast majority belong to Ohio School Boards Association, and that in the aggregate, we can stand behind best practices as well as advocate for the best climate for public education. So in my mind, they offer a great deal, and it's a worthy group to belong to.
So I would, I would add, I would absolutely agree with some of what Ms. Jessling just said. I've attended many classes and courses with OSBA, and I do find value in some of them. However, my main issue is with the membership alone. I don't have or take issue with individual classes that people may attend, or even Capitol Conference. We still pay for Capitol Conference. Even though we do have a membership, we still pay for a portion of, who goes to Capitol Conference. So we get some free and then some we have to pay. And we still do pay for classes and courses that we elect to go to through OSBA. But what I will say is that I disagree very much with using public tax dollars and putting it towards political efforts. And OSBA has a lobbying platform. They have a legislative platform. I was very dismayed last year at the Capitol Conference when the parental rights platform was, by large, I was sitting in there, probably 80% of school boards turned it down. So they do not lobby for parental rights. So I disagree with spending $11,000 on using public tax money for political purposes. Not all that $11,000 is going to go towards their lobbyists or their legislative platform, but a portion does go towards it. And I don't think that if we're trying to give a perception out to the community that we're not playing politics or we're trying to stay neutral, I don't think it's wise to give money to an organization that is a 501(c)(4), which is different than a 501(c)(3). 501(c)(3) is more of a charity. (c)(4) the changes that they can have lobbying efforts, which in itself is political. So I greatly disagree with spending money via a membership with them.
I agree. Being new, I came across this, I did some research, and I believe it was in 2022 where the board, together with then Mr. Porter, who was superintendent, agreed to separate from NSBA because they were too political in making comments that said, called parents terrorists. So not only was it an inappropriate characterization, it was a political statement, not supported by many in the country and also not supported by Mener. I think that we just need to be consistent. You know, I also find a lot of useful information, and certainly the Capitol Conference, I got to attend this year, and that was, that was wonderful. And again, we can, we can still take advantage of those à la carte, I guess you could say. But maybe we send a message that says, you know, the majority of our voters voted for parental rights, and the fact that they are not lobbying, they're lobbying against that, I think that we can send a message and say, you're not going to get our money. You know, we can take $10,000. I know it's not a lot in the budget that we have, but that's money that we're not taking away from our students, resources, and staff. So maybe we send a message this time around and say, we're not going to spend tax dollars for lobbying against parental rights.
As a candidate, I will say that I took advantage of OSBA's training for candidates, people who are interested in becoming school board members. They were free, luckily, to me, and I found them to be incredibly valuable and helped inform my positions and my opinions on school board matters and in public education. I, I looked at the legislative platform with OSBA, and I didn't see anything that I wouldn't appreciate them lobbying on our behalf for. So I'm curious as to what in the platform you're concerned about.
So in, last year at the Capitol Conference-
No, I understood that, forgive me. I understood what you said, but that's not in the platform today, is it?
Right, because they voted it down.
So then what is on the platform today that you take issue with?
I take issue with their general platform, because if we're saying that we are trying to stay neutral and we shouldn't be using public dollars for anything political in nature, this is very political with the 501(c)(4). Also, just for example, I took a course with OSBA where they mocked parents who spoke out against masking and showed videos of them during this course stating that they were, it was basically a course about trying to not let people like that speak for public participation, also for CRT. They showed little clips, and I was appalled at that. So there are things that I agree with with OSBA, but I vehemently oppose using public tax money for political purposes. And I think that that can be appreciated by our board, because if you remember, well, you weren't here, but I think Ms. Iapolo was at that meeting. In July of 2022, I requested to go to a training, and Ms. Jessling and Ms. Cook voted against my training, which was only $40, because they thought it was political in nature. So under that same guise, I think we need to be consistent and send a consistent message. Either it's okay, or it's not okay.
But I haven't really heard anything about specific issues in the platform that you're taking, that are problematic for you. So I guess I'm still not hearing that.
I think not, not fighting lobbying for parental rights is the problem.
Because the platform itself is- So that's not in the platform, and that's what you take issue with? Am I clear?
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
If I recall correctly, the discussion that we had specifically before the legislative meeting at Capitol Conference of 2022, the sticking point was the word "all." It didn't have any nuance to it, and that was why, at least that 80% or whatever that long protracted meeting decided that it was too rigid. And so it was agreed upon by those present that that would not be added to the platform. So there was no objection or minimizing of parental rights, because that's been embedded in lots of things that the OSBA has encouraged and supported. It was in the platform because of its "all or nothing," basically. "All" was, was the word. And I remember we had that work session, and we spent a couple hours focused on that detail. And because it was such a rigid interpretation of protecting parental rights, because it had to do with the impact on classroom teachers having to make sure that they would have their entire curriculum potentially available on day one, which made it impossible to be flexible to meet the evolving needs of your class, for example. So it just got to be so, so rigid that I don't think it was in the best interest of what is a good practice for a classroom teacher. So that was how we came up to that point. And we must not have been alone, because that meeting went on for four and a half hours, and finally, they decided to leave that out, as I recall, because the general vote was no. So they weren't against parental rights, but they were against kind of that extreme position having to do with them.
Now, I sat in that meeting, and I did see several amendments. I mean, amendments were going up left and right in the meeting. So they did sift through some of that. However, I stand firm. I think, I know that Ms. Cook and Ms. Jessling, you guys didn't agree with the word "all." I certainly agree with the word "all." I think parents do have a right to know all aspects of their child's education. So that's why I can't support the OSB membership if they can't support parents, especially using public tax dollars, without asking our taxpayers how they feel about the legislative platform or what they approve and don't approve of. I just think that it's, it's sending the wrong message that we are okay with political aspects and using our public tax dollars for those efforts.
So in reviewing the legislative platform earlier today, what I saw was an emphasis on public education. And if public tax dollars should fund anything at all, I think we could all agree, it's public education. So for me, you know, that's what stood out to me, and that's why I would wholeheartedly support a membership with the OSBA.
Let's just remember, too, that we have a failed levy, so this could send a message to our taxpayers. We're really being picky about where we're sending our money, your money.
I agree.
I think I would have to agree with Mrs. Marchaza here that lobbying is, is a way of, is the way that the government is working right now. And public schools, I feel they do have a right to have lobbyists as well. And there is no other money to pay for the lobbyists other than public school money. That is why the platform that OSBA creates, it's very stringent. You need to have 75% of your voting members of the legislative, your legislative liaisons deciding that this goes into your legislative platform. And the legislative platform is very transparent. You can go on the OSBA site, and you can look at everything that they would- You can go on the OSBA site, and you can look at everything that they would lobby for. They're not lobbying against parental rights. They are lobbying for the things that are on their platform. And I have also thoroughly reviewed the legislative platform of OSBA, and it is very public, pro-public education. There is not a single thing on there that I would not stand for. And if anyone could bring up something specifically to me to say, I cannot agree with this platform here, and that's why Menor Schools shouldn't invest in that, then I would be open to hearing that. But I feel that everything on their platform is very appropriate to advocate for.
Mrs. Cook, do you feel that a 501(c)(4) does have, since it does have lobbying efforts, is political in nature?
Yes.
So if I go back to July of 2022, when you voted against my training, your words, which is okay. We vote on training, that's fine, I take no issue with that. But I think we need to have a clear, consistent message, because your reason for voting no on video, because I watched it again the other day just to see, for this purpose specifically, because we had this conversation last year. Your reason was that it was political in nature, that that training was political in nature, so you couldn't support that.
It was political in nature, it was anti-public education. There were speakers at that conference, when I looked into it, that specifically had an agenda that said they wanted to reduce public education and actually eliminate public education and defund it.
I don't believe that's true, but there were some speakers, I will say, that I didn't wholeheartedly, I don't wholeheartedly agree with, just like OSBA, which you see that as anti-public school. I see OSBA as anti-parental rights with some of their courses. Certainly the class that I took about public participation and how to shut that down when parents start speaking up about their rights, about their children in masks or about what their children are seeing in books, or what their children are seeing in, that are considered CRT or DEI or whatnot. So we just have, I guess, different perspectives on what kind of political aspects are acceptable or not.
So was there something in the legislative platform that you did not agree with?
I disagree with the fact that they didn't allow parental rights into the platform.
Okay, but there's nothing currently in the platform that you disagree with?
Last I checked, there's nothing in the platform, but it's the fact that they voted down parental rights. And I disagree with some of their material and courses that they offer, but I think we all should have the right to go to what training we see fit.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo? Ms. Payne?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries 3 to 2.
All right, we will take approval of agenda items for items 11 through 28. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Mr. Wade, please call the roll.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Cook, or excuse me, sorry, Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to the superintendent report and recommendations, where we've got our two administrative committees that we're looking at. We've got our curriculum liaison committee first. Currently sitting on that committee, we've got Ms. Jessling and Mrs. Payne. Is that something you are still wanting to be part of? Any others that would want to be part of that, too?
I'd be interested.
And I'm just looking at my sheet here with all the other appointments that we've had this evening to make sure that we're balancing out what we have here, too. From the school safety side, then we currently have Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Briner, who is no longer on the board, that are part of that. Mrs. Cook, I'm assuming you want to continue with that?
I would love to, thank you.
And any others that would be interested?
I would. I'd like to be considered as well.
Safety.
Are we allowed to have any kind of comments about that?
Yeah, yeah, feel free.
So I would just add that I kind of spearheaded the entire discussion about the retired resource officers. And that's been going on for about, oh gosh, a year and a half now. So I think I would be a valuable resource in the safety committee. And after we kind of created the liaison position for curriculum, I was consistently requesting that same thing for safety. And if we go back a couple months ago, we did kind of talk about safety committee, and it was Mrs. Cook, myself, and then Mrs. Briner who offered to be on it. And I stepped away, I said, let Mrs. Briner, because she only had three more months to go. So I've been pretty much invested in safety and also discipline, which I'm hoping that discussion can kind of weave its way through into the safety committee as well.
So for me, you know, it was one of my top priority, it was my top priority during my campaign. And with two children in the district, it's always on my mind. And so it's something I think about constantly. And I've been really impressed with the progress we've made so far. Of course, we definitely have to make some adjustments to our expectations now that our PI levy did not pass. So we're going to have to get creative, and that's something I'm really ready to do and have that conversation to see what we can do to make our buildings as safe as they can possibly be.
Mrs. Payne, would you consider giving up curriculum?
I mean, I'm the one who recommended it, but if I had to pick between the two, I would like to switch to safety.
I'd switch to curriculum, then, that's fine.
And again, looking at the balance that we're trying to strike with some of this, too. Currently, Ms. Cook has financial advisory and nothing else. Safety would give her two pieces to the puzzle here. Annie, you currently have Menor Schools Foundation's, safety would give you two. Lauren, you've got legislative liaison and board policy liaison. So that gives you two. Sorry, Mrs. Marchaza. Ms. Iapolo, we've got the legislative alternate, which is not a lot, really, right now. And then the board policy liaison. So part of what I'm thinking right now is if we do safety with Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Payne, and then curriculum with Mrs. Iapolo, and then we've got a decision to make between Mrs. Marchaza and Mrs. Jessling.
Well, Jenny, if you would like that, that's, I could...
I'd be happy to continue to serve on that, if that's okay.
Of course.
So let's go this route, then. Let's go curriculum liaisons will be Mrs. Iapolo and Mrs. Jessling. Let's go safety with Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Payne. And I believe we've got some pretty good balance across the board, then. Everybody agreeable to that? All right, so that's what we will do. Thank you for the discussion and the compromise with all of that, too. I think that'll, this gives us some pretty good balance from those committees. And the one thing I'll mention about the board policy liaison committee, too, personally, I love that we have Mrs. Marchaza and Mrs. Iapolo on that, because we just went through the board policy manual piece to the puzzle and...
You never want to look at it again, do you?
For you guys to be able to jump into some of the board policies and really dig into some of those updates that we make, I think that'll be an important piece to that puzzle, too. And again, I think you'll both bring some very good perspective to that. Plus, you'll just enjoy having another meeting with Mr. Wade and I twice a year. All right, that's everything that I have on by superintendent report and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second?
Please call the roll, Mr. Wade.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Ms. Jessling?
Yes.
Ms. Iapolo?
Yes.
Ms. Marchaza?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned 7:45.